Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February Board Meeting for the Aces Public School Board of Education. It's our regular board meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Denise, we call the roll, please.
Bonham.
President.
Brooks.
President.
Gomer.
Here.
Graves.
Here.
Katsberg. Schneider.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Sullivan.
President.
Bobby.
Here.
Thank you. Will you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. As required by Nebraska law, the public is advised that a complete copy of the Open Meetings Act is available for the public, and copies are located in the back of the room. We're going to get right down to our normal business this evening. First up to be minutes of the previous meetings, that would be the work session and the board meeting, the regular board meeting for the month of January. Are there any board members who have any corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I move to present the minutes as presented.
All right. Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by John, seconded by Sharon. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Here now, we're ready to vote, please. All right, that motion carries. Eight zero. Our next item is the payment of expenditures. Jeff, good evening.
Good evening. This month, our general fund expenditures totaled $483,659.28. The depreciation fund, $11,598.80. The activity fund, $74,786.68. The lunch fund, $131,492.30. The cooperative fund, $64,843.79. And the construction fund, $280,511.53. When you combine that with this month's payroll, which was $3,141,927.93, it brings our total expenditures for the month to $4,188,820.40. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Is there a board member who'd like to make a motion on the payment of expenditures?
I move to approve the payment of expenditures in the amount of $4,188,820.40.
All right. Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Jody, seconded by John. Questions or discussion? All right. Looks like we're ready to vote on that. That motion carries. Eight zero as well. We don't have an administrative report or correspondence to receive, so that takes us to our superintendent report. Jeff?
Yes, we've got a lot of good news this month. We're going to start by congratulating the following eighth grade students for being selected to represent Hastings during the Carney Middle School Honor Band, which will be February 28th. Jayden Allman, Brayden Bell, Naomi Brooks, Lila Bryant, Madison Fielder, Ashlyn George, Liz Hoffman, Sophie Yarmer, Calvin King, David Lopez, Andrea Perez-Andre, McCain Retsliff, Sam Rogers, Anna Rogers, Isaac Russell, Simon Schaefer, Peyton Smith, and Sam Thomas. We also want to congratulate the Senior High Quiz Bowl team for taking first place at the ASU Nine Quiz Bowl recently. The team members are Blake Harrington, Wyatt Johnson, Brianna Groves, Tyson Pappas, Pauline Jongluthbaum, and Jude Rudd. This team will go on to compete at the state level on April 29th. And continuing with the Quiz Bowl, which is going to be a reoccurring theme, we want to congratulate the middle school sixth grade team for taking first place. Team members were Esther Allen Pickett, Kayden Bartunick, Anakin Jorzenka, Liberty Kimina, Ella Tinsman, Vivian Turner, and Harrison Welch. And sticking with Quiz Bowl, the eighth grade orange Quiz Bowl team took first place. Team members were Sam Tunks, Dilsia Kalindra Sponceca, Fernando Pettit, Isaac Russell, Naomi Brooks, and Zane Tompkins. Also, along those lines, the eighth grade black team took third place at the ASU Nine Challenge. So I think Hastings Public had an elementary, a middle school, and a high school team take first place, which is outstanding. So very proud of all those students and their sponsors. We want to congratulate the Hastings High Boys Bowling Team in their first year as an official NSA sport, as being the A6 district champions and qualified for the state tournament. And also the girls bowling team, who was the A6 runner-up and qualified for the state tournament. Again, that had been an activity where they had had a very strong club presence, but it's just exciting to see them be an official part of the NSA competition and have a great season. So it was very successful. We've got some students that did outstanding at the Adams County Spelling Bee, and you can see we've got a lot of them listed. I'm going to just announce the first-place ones, but a lot of kids that should be proud. In third grade, first place went to Carolina Reda from Watson. Fifth grade, first place Brendan Callahan Lewis from Alcott. And sixth grade, first place Richard Joe from the middle school. So some outstanding performances in the spelling bee. Then we want to congratulate our Hawthorne students and families who packed 33 priority boxes for deployed military service personnel and raised over $200 for shipping to contribute to the package drive for Officer Cunningham, who was one of our SROs who is deployed, and then Mr. Bartles, who is a parent at Hawthorne who is also deployed. So outstanding work by some Hawthorne students. And a couple of late adds, congratulations to the Hastings High School Wrestling Team on winning the B3 district championship, and I think they're sending nine qualifiers down to the state meet. And we don't have this one in here yet. It'll probably be in next month, but I think I also saw that our boys' swimming team won conference, so they're to be congratulated as well. We'll probably have that in officially next month. So at this time, I'm hoping... Carlos here? Carlos, would you come up here, please? This is maybe more than you bargained for, though. Carlos, come on. So this is part of our good news, but a little bit different. And I'm so thankful that we have some orchestra students and their parents here tonight because we've got a little bigger crowd than normal, and this deserves a little bigger crowd. So last week at the high school, we had a student eaten in the cafeteria who began to choke. And it was not, it was a very serious situation and very scary. And this young man, Carlos Perez-Andre, stepped up and gave this other student the Heimlich maneuver and dislodged the food and allowed this other student to breathe freely. The other student described it as a life-saving action. Carlos, I don't know what else to say, except you are a true hero, and thank you for stepping up and doing that. I know the high school administration is honoring him as well, but we thought it was appropriate that he be here tonight. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Well done. Well done. Thanks for being here. Not quite done with good news yet. Every year, we recognize our school board for their service. On behalf of the 3,600 students, the 500-plus adults in the entire community, we try to recognize the work they do, and I will tell you, it's a ton of community service. The last three years feel a little different than things in the past, but especially this year, to me, feels different. So I think it's appropriate that we look at this a little bit differently. None of you could have known all the challenges you were going to face when you ran to be on the school board. You thought you wanted to do community service and look out for the best for our students and staff members. Regardless of whether someone agrees or disagrees with your views on a particular topic, no one can argue that you have not went above and beyond your call and what you promised to do. You attend countless hours of meetings, you take calls from individuals with concerns, and you've even been given some, let's call it constructive criticism from time or two, and sometimes it's been directed at you personally, despite the fact that for all of this, you get a grand compensation of maybe a piece of candy and zero dollars. I was recently asked to name some of the strengths of our district, and I named three things. First, I said our staff. I said, "We have people who will do anything to help a student. You'll meet some of the best people around that work at Hastings Public Schools." The second thing I mentioned was our community. We've passed three bond issues and a levy override in the last 15 years, which is incredible. The third thing I listed, our school board, a dedicated group that looks at every issue, and when you do not agree with each other, you listen to other people's views and respect their opinion. And in my opinion, we could use more leaders that do that. So on behalf of the Hastings Public Schools, thank you for your dedication and your persistence. We are so lucky to have the nine individuals we do. There's a small token of appreciation up there for you, but thank you, thank you, thank you. You have went above and beyond this year. Outstanding. And I think it's appropriate, at this time, as part of that, we've got a wonderful group of orchestra students that we're going to turn things over to at this time. Take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for having us perform for you tonight. I'm Nate Bernard Stevens. I teach orchestra at Hawthorne Elementary, the middle school and the high school. I just got back from a weekend where I had three high school orchestra kids at the Nebraska Wesleyan Honor Orchestra Band and Choir, and that was a fantastic experience with an internationally-known composer and master teacher. To come back and do this, which is, I think, even more important. So these kids are fifth-grade orchestra kids from all five schools. We have three from each elementary school, I believe. And so I've got some from Hawthorne, I've got some from Longfellow, Lincoln, Alcott, and Watson. And Mrs. Christine Demare is our elementary orchestra string specialist, and she is going to be accompanying us today. We'll play two preview songs from our concert as a way of saying thank you. concert that will be at the high school. We are super excited for that. And we will leave you with the thanks of the week count today, 198 string kids between Thank you all very much. It's been a great year for us so far, and we are looking forward to the spring. Thank you all for your support and support and advocacy. Looking forward to the rest of the school year.
I wanted to thank our board members, our administration, with this being Valentine's Day and a board appreciation acknowledgement, and for our administration, because you're all a part, a huge part of what we do. We cannot do what we do with these kids without your support, and we are so grateful. Anytime that I get in front of parents, I brag on our board, I brag on our administration, our principals, our teachers, they say, "We have such a huge support system here. It really does take a village to do what we're doing." And from the bottom of our hearts, we want to say, "You are great, and you rock." Thank you for us, and happy Valentine's Day.
We may have just done the school words.
Thank you for all your support.
We thought you were giving us stuff.
Well said.
thankful to those students and their teachers for being here tonight. And I want to conclude our report with more great information. Every month, we choose one building to focus on for our spotlighting learning. And if you know anything about Watson, which is up this month, this is how they roll. They don't give you one or two people, they come in groups. So I am thankful for the Watson team that's here tonight. Watson team, you are up. It's all yours.
Okay. For those of you that do not know me, I'm Bethany Haas. I teach second grade at Watson. I am going to do the intro for you guys today, and I will keep it short, but I don't know about these. So, sorry. How was I saying, Terry? I hit the mute. Yeah, I hit it, but I don't know. Okay, there it is. Okay, so we are here to talk to you about our small group reading instruction that we've started this year. It all started about a year or so ago. We filled out a survey, district-wide survey, about what we would want more guidance on, more structure, and I feel like a lot of the teachers felt very strongly about our small group reading instruction and wanting ways, like wanting to know where to go. We have a kid, we need this, what's the next step? So here is what we've started, and we started with kindergarten through second grade. And so here are some of the materials that we use, and they hit on the big five of reading. So we've got Hegarty, which touches on phonemic awareness. We've got Enhanced Core, which explicitly teaches phonics, both of which go very nicely with the Journeys curriculum that we've already had. The Journeys curriculum touches a little bit on vocab and on comprehension, and is also the bulk of our reading. It's our stories, what we use with the kids. And then to touch on the fluency, we use Six Minute Solutions. And so I really love this because it's mainstreamed, it's structured, we know what the next steps are going to be, and we can differentiate very well for our kiddos. And so I'm going to turn it over to my staffers here. We've got Michelle. She's going to talk to you about kindergarten, and we're just going to go through the day-to-day kind of what a small group reading instruction looks like.
Hello, I'm Michelle Raymind. My role, I'm not a kindergarten teacher, I'm filling in for a kindergarten teacher. I'm one of your Title I teachers and have been an instructional coach in the past. What you see here, it is not really going to go along with what I'm going to tell you about. The picture is showing you that on every other Friday, we assess our students, seeing that they are getting the skills that we are teaching. How we do this in the Watson way, as we like to say, is that in kindergarten, we run a 30-minute skills group. It takes our entire team of kindergarten classroom teachers, our Title I staff, and our sped staff, with three to four adults per classroom, and we use the initial grouping from Akadians to show the ability group as to where those students need to be, and then we're able to differentiate within those groups. We run a phonemic awareness group, and then they go on to their Enhanced Core group, where they get their letter names and sounds, and starting to blend those to make words, looking at our high-frequency words, and then they go through a rotation of reading. And so that is a rundown of what we do.
Did you see that, Karen? Only that audience member.
And there's our support staff.
And then this is just an example of a support staff. So when we do that, we each take about eight students and see if they have accomplished those skills, analyze that data, and reteach what needs to be taught. This is showing you a piece of our data, and that we wanted to see how we compared to the district. And we're happy to report that Watson is hanging right in there with 72%. The district being at 71% proficient. This score is taken from their benchmark that is comprised of can they do first-sound fluency, phonemic segmentation, and do they know their correct letter sounds? Our goal at the end of the year, of course, will be 80 or higher, and we're working on it. I think we're going to get there with no problems.
Again, another list of the materials.
Now, we're going to move to first grade. I'm Raquel Hensley. I teach first grade over at Watson. So as you see here, something new that we're kind of trying with this whole Enhanced Core ICG thing that we're doing is a new thing called the two-finger track. So we've always tracked with one finger as the students read, but now we're doing two fingers. So the kids are pointing to the line that they're reading as long as the word that they're reading, and that's going to help with fluency and the accuracy as we read. So here, you can kind of see the kids work on that. Kind of going off what Michelle just talked about, we group our kids based on the Akadians that we do three times a year. We differentiate amongst that. We really try and hit not only those intensive kids that we need to hit, but also challenge our kiddos who are reading beyond first grade. So we've kind of incorporated a walk to reading for some of those kiddos, so we can hit their level to keep challenging them as they're pulling. Here again, you see them working on that two-finger tracking. We... I'm trying to think what other things that we talked about on this. I'm drawing a blank, sorry.
That two-finger tracking assist with just fluency to it, making sure kids aren't missing words, but reading like you talk. And so tracking and making sure that all students are reading at all times helps increase the number of words that kids read.
And that's something new, and we're implementing that all the way from kindergarten to second grade. So it's something new, even as I read to the kids, when I'm tracking, I have to work on that two-finger track as well. So it's something we're all learning. And here, you can see some data that we're working compared to the district. In first grade, something new we do, they are introduced to that oral reading fluency in first grade. Kindergarten, it's phonemic awareness, correct letter sounds. First grade, we put all that together around Christmas time, and they're assessed on their oral reading fluency. They've got a lot of tools in their toolbox, we're going to see what they can do. So it's kind of a big step for our first graders, but you can see we're making some gains, we're doing pretty good against the district, so.
All right. And I'm Jamie Paulman. I'm a second-grade teacher at Watson, along with Bethany here. And this is just kind of a picture here of what our small reading groups look like. Like we said, we meet in those groupings that are leveled based on our Akadians data, and you'll see with those small groups, all kids are reading the entire time they're meeting with us. And as we go through to the next couple of slides, you'll see what do kiddos do when they're not meeting with us with that individualized intensive work? They are working on individual tasks based on their level, and I can give you a look to the next slide, you might see it here. Here, they're working in that small group with me, but on the next slide, you'll see... Sorry, I'm looking for this one. You'll see, this is an independent group. They have a task based on what they've learned in whole group to complete during that time, so they're actually working with partners, and they're leveled group that would actually meet with me or the assistants in the classroom. And from that, we just take based on those four phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, that focus, and then have them do independent work on that, which could also involve our next slide, which we are lucky enough to have our one-to-one computers for our kiddos so they can have access to Epic, which is an online library, and also access to our Google Classroom, too, where we can transfer our Journeys curriculum over to them there so they can read stories online as well. And we are very extremely happy about how well our kiddos have done and the growth that they've shown, so very proud of them.
Okay, so are there any questions?
Questions from anyone? So do they switch building groups at all during the year?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And is that a big motivation for them?
Yeah, they love it. And we do like challenge chapter book groups, and I mean, we call it double or triple dipping, like a chocolate-covered peanut. So we're like, we do whole groups, so they get one dip, and then we'll pull them for a small group, they get a second dip, and then sometimes some kids even get a third dip. So we love it. It's a way to really differentiate and...
I was going to say, those dips include like that same instruction they received in whole group, but just in a smaller group, and then even transferring into different interventions for those kids that show the need, so.
We've seen the growth. I mean, we can see the growth that we're making from the beginning of the year to now. It's working.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sharon, you got a question?
What's it like working with parents in this program you're working on? What do they say about it? What would you...
I don't know if we really know that much about it, to be honest. We share a little bit, just mainly the good things, you know, the growth that they're making, their students are making, and just what we're doing to make sure that their student reaches the benchmark goal, the reading goal, so.
And it is a lot...
And it is a lot more structured than it has previously been, which I think is different for our kids, but I feel like they've adjusted well, and it's much more strategic even than what we were previously doing, so.
Okay. Somebody up here used the word "it's working." Work is the appropriate word. This is, they make it sound easy, this is more work for the adults. And, and, great job, great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. All right, Jeff, anything else?
That concludes the report for this month. Lot of good things going on, lot of good kids in our school district, lot of good adults in our school district, so.
Go ahead and report there. All right. We've reached our first opportunity to be heard. A resident employee of Hastings Public School District is welcome to address the Board of Education this time on items that pertain to the agenda. You wish to address the board, request to come to the microphone, may recognize, give his or her name and address. Questions relating to employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should refer to the superintendent at another time. Any requests or comments, we live in the five minutes. Citizens who wish to present petitions to the board regarding agenda items, may do so at this time, however, the board will only receive the petitions, will not act upon them or their contents. Anybody wishing to address the board on agenda items? Okay, we'll keep moving on here to special board functions. Our first item is the letter of interest to Adam Central for girls wrestling. Jeff?
Yes, and we've been discussing for, off and on for a few months now. We think it makes the most sense to enter into some discussions with Adam Central about co-lapping for girls wrestling. As we discussed Thursday night, they started it, this sport this year. I think I'm correct that they have five participants, I'm not 100% sure, that's the number I was given earlier, and we just are not sure what kind of number we're looking at next year, so we think that makes the most sense. It would be a year-to-year agreement, because obviously, if we get surprised and we have a large number of participants, it might not make sense down the road to co-op. The thing we don't want to do is take away opportunities for any of their students or any of our students. We want to work together if it makes sense. So if you approve this, we will go down that road, working with them to begin this in the 22-23 school year.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for a board member on this item?
I move to approve the letter of interest to Adam Central for girls wrestling.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Becky, second by Laura. Questions or discussion, comments? Okay, we're ready to vote on this, please. All right, that motion carries. Eight-zero. Lawrence, good evening, district calendar for next year.
Good evening. So tonight, we'll be asking you to approve the proposed 2022-2023 school calendar. As I mentioned on Thursday, this calendar closely resembles the current calendar with the similar start and end dates, and then the number of pre-service days. You will notice that there are some minor differences. We did add a planning day for October 31st. We did something similar this year, it wasn't on the calendar, so we decided that we would just put that on the calendar for next year. Also, on this particular calendar, it does have one less vacation day during the winter break, so it's not a full two weeks. We did this based on the feedback that we received from staff when we put our survey out recommending extending that spring break, so we took a day from that and then dropped that into that March-spring break to extend that a little bit. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve the 2022-2023 district calendar.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Brent, second by Jody. Questions or discussion on that? Okay, ready to vote on that? Motion carries eight-zero as well. The next is the Senior High Registration Handbook. Lawrence, again.
All right. So for tonight, you have two documents in our system here. One is the proposed 2022-23 Senior High Registration Handbook. The second document that you have just provides you with the suggested changes to the registration handbook and an explanation or description of why those are changes. The changes are fairly minor, really. It's, you know, some of them are just updating specific course names due to the changing standards from NDE, or some of those requirements and prereqs that would follow along with that. There are some changes that just include additional information that might be added to a particular course, and then some revised course descriptions based on changing standards. As I mentioned Thursday, there is a likelihood that there will be at least one addendum to the registration handbook, as we're working on providing or setting up and hopefully providing some additional dual-print courses for our high school students, but those haven't been finalized. Also, one change to note with the passage of the Financial Literacy Act, you'll notice that that's going to become a requirement for graduation, which will affect our current sophomores, so next year when they're juniors, that'll be a junior and senior-level class. And as a result, that will increase the graduation credit requirements to 225 as opposed to 220 where it's at today. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
I move to approve the 2022-23 Senior High Registration Handbook.
All right, thank you, and a second? Thank you, moved by Jody, second by Chris. Questions or discussion? I didn't know we were going to have those kids registered. All right, ready to vote on that? That motion carries eight-zero. All right, we're up to foreign language travel. Lawrence, again.
All right, this one is the gift that keeps on giving. We've had this conversation quite a bit over the course of the last year, really. In December, when we met, we felt that it was, it would be prudent to wait on asking you to approve the foreign travel request, because really, we wanted to see how the conditions would change between then and now. This also aligns with the last payment. So the last payment for our students would be March 15th, so if we brought it up in February, this would give us a little bit more time and a little bit more time for our families and our students to think about whether or not they want to do this trip. Because since we had met the last, you know, since we talked about this the last time, there have been several updates, you know? When we talked about this before, the travel company would not allow students to travel when a country is at a Level 4 with the COVID requirements and things like that. So what the travel company has done is they've actually started changing their policy to allow students to travel even when it is a Level 4. But to do that, students and parents will have to sign, you know, a waiver stating that they understand that, that this is a Level 4. So right now, France is in a Level 4, but the numbers have been decreasing. The hope is, is that by late June, June 23 is when they will travel, that they'll be actually at a Level 3 at that particular point. With our students, our students are fully vaccinated. This company that we have been working with, they've secured insurance policies to cover COVID situations if someone were to test positive, like a sponsor or students. So there is, there are plans in place if that happens, and then they also have that insurance policy to kind of back that up as well. So again, tonight, we're asking that you approve this foreign travel, foreign language travel request for this summer.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve the Senior High Foreign Language Travel Request for a trip to France.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Sharon, second by Brent. Questions or discussion on this?
Just a little comment. The amount of energy that was just found on this is phenomenal, I just want to recommend that.
It's been abused.
Put a lot of time into this and make a point for those kids.
That's great, absolutely.
I'll comment also. I appreciate the extra work and the uncertainty that we have today. This feels like a better prepared plan than we've had prior, so thanks for additional work on that as well.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, ready to vote on that item? All right, motion carries eight-zero as well. We're looking at purchasing some band uniforms, Jeff.
Yes, my background is school finance manager for this district. I was usually not very excited about bringing to you a six-digit purchase, but I am this one. We've been trying to figure out for a while how we were going to do this, and I mentioned it Thursday night, the break we got was the way the ESSR funds fell. It works for districts like ours, which it's about time a district like ours got a break. But I think, I think this activity involves over 10% of our students at Hastings High School, and I think it's been almost 15 years, so we are happy to recommend the purchase of band uniforms. I believe, well, I won't speculate on when we'll actually get them, because the way things are going, who knows? But we'll start the process tomorrow if you approve this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
With excitement, I move to approve the purchase of band uniforms of about $103,432.15.
All right, thank you, and a second?
With giddy glee.
Thank you, moved by Chris, second by Laura. Questions or discussion? All right, ready to vote on that, as if somebody would dare to vote nothing like that. All right, that motion does carry. Eight-zero. Trent, good evening, we've got some Morton change orders.
I don't know if I'll get a motion like that. We talked about these on Thursday night, there's four of them, two adds and two deducts. I like seeing the deducts, but if you have any questions, I'd certainly answer them if you have any.
Okay, is there a motion from a board member on this item?
I move to approve the Morton change orders after that.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Brent, second by Sharon. Questions or discussion on that? Okay, go ahead and vote. Motion carries eight-zero. David, good evening, paper bedtime.
Good evening. I'm hoping to see a lot of enthusiasm on this one as well. As I mentioned the other night at the work session, we are using less paper as a district, which is a great thing, but paper costs are high, so even though we're ordering less paper this year, our paper bids are actually higher than they were a year ago. So we did get three bids, and we are recommending the approval of the lowest bid, which is from Eeks, in the amount of $37,265. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion on that item?
I move to approve the paper bid from Eeks in the amount of $37,265 for the 2022-23 school year.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Becky, second by John. Questions or discussion on that item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that. That motion carries eight-zero. David, what's the consent agenda?
Yes, I do want to point out again that we have two new principal recommendations on the consent agenda. John Howser has been selected to be the principal at Hawthorne pending approval. He is currently the principal at Star Elementary in Grand Island. The other principal selection is Jeff Yonda, who has been selected at Watson, and Jeff is currently a professional development specialist at ESU-10 in Carney. He's also a former teacher here at Hastings Public at the middle school. So they are on the consent agenda, and if approved, they will both be very involved in the hiring of the remaining staff at those buildings, and we've already been talking to them about that pending board approval. One last thing, we currently have 19 certified openings and eight classified openings in the district at this time. So that's all I've got, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any items that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda items. I'd like to point out under gifts, we got, received a gift from First Congregational UCC. They donated backpack, pants, underwear, socks, clothes, hats, toothpaste, and a motor to Lincoln Elementary students of value of $100. And then Sherri Eckhart donated 50 knitted year-one wraps to the Hawthorne Elementary students at a value of $250, and we greatly appreciate the generosity.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Laura, second by Brent. Questions or discussion? All right, ready to vote on the consent agenda? That motion carries eight-zero. We've reached our second opportunity for the public to be heard, same guidelines, but this need not be restricted to just the agenda, it can be on items pertaining to education and/or the operation of the district. Okay, we'll move on. Oh, we have one, oh, sorry. Come forward here.
Just here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Monty Starkey, I'm a resident of Hastings. And I am coming to invite you guys, I'm here to extend a personal invitation to view a documentary showing next Monday evening here in Hastings. Lifehouse Church is allowing their facility to be used for the purpose of this public viewing of this documentary concerning the proposed health standards by the Nebraska Board of Education. I think we can all agree, anything involving our children's education requires us to obtain all available information on the subject matter. And it's important to me because I am a school nurse. It would almost be negligent for anyone to vote yes or no on the proposed health standards without seeing this very comprehensive and well-sourced documentary. So again, I strongly encourage each of you to attend next Monday, February 21st, at 6:30 at Lifehouse Church. It's no longer than your average movie at the theater, but its informational value is far greater than your average movie. And I have, if you want me to give them all to you to pass out? Does anybody have any questions for me about this?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the board, please? Okay, reminders, future board meetings, tomorrow's a deadline for incumbents to refile if they want to run for school board in the fall, February 15, just thought I'd throw that out. We do have a work session and a regular board meeting next March, I don't know which one. The Quiz Bowl team will be here to take on the directors, but I heard it's going to be Sharon will be the radio spokesperson for the month, and we are ready for our motion to adjourn. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Laura, second by Brent. All board members in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stane? We are adjourned, thank you everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day.